All right. So this is the April 27 meeting of the Groton Planning and Zoning Commission. Jeff, Chair, staff tonight is Dan Glimbuski, Bruce Lofgren, and Dem Jones. The public will have the opportunity to address the commission if they'd like under under Public Communications. You will need to raise your virtual hand in order to do that. On an Apple device, you can find that at the top of your screen. On a Mac, it's at the bottom. And if you're on the phone, it is star nine.
Okay, so I'll call the Planning and zoning Commission meeting to order. Roll call. It looks like we're missing Barbara and Michael Kane. You don't see him doing that. I don't see on the screen, but I don't see the full screen. So I'll appoint Steve and Kevin to take place of Michael Kane and Barbara Tarbox. So that will give us a quorum. Next item is approval of minutes of previous meetings. We have a meeting of April 13th. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 13th. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved in second. Does anyone have any corrections?
Jeff wanted to point out that Michael Kane did join.
He was an attendee and I just promoted him, so he's in.
Oh, he did? Okay. So I don't know whose turn it was. I'll have Steve sit for Barbara then.
Sorry, I couldn't either didn't get or I couldn't find my invitation. My apologies.
All right. Well, we haven't taken any action yet. Does anyone have any corrections into the minutes? If none, we'll vote on the motion to approve the minutes as written. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously. We have no public hearings. Let's see. Okay, next is Public Communications. Does anyone on the commission have any communications they have received? I do did get one from Jeffrey Richards with concerns with the Mystic Bluffs development. I don't know if you got a copy of that.
I got that letter as well.
Yep. Yeah, could you?
I will give you a copy.
Thank you. Yes, staff did not get that.
On the record, I think. At least to show that everyone's received it. Does staff have any communications to identify? Does anyone in the public wish to address the commission on any of the items not on the business tonight?
Have a couple of folks with their hands raised.
All right, would you could you recognize them?
So Roseanne Kautowski.
Good evening. Roseanne Kautowski, 24 Ann Avenue, RTM District Five. While I appreciate the work of the Planning and Zoning Commission, I am totally frustrated and disappointed with the current regulations rewrite process. As I have mentioned to you in the past, I do not understand why the developer is included in the regulation rewrite. Please see the January 15, 2021, Horstley Witten Group memo to Reiner from Davis referencing, quote, Mystic Education Center zoning. There are many questions that I and others have regarding this document. Is there a possibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission, not staff, holding an informal workshop with the concerned residents in order to answer questions regarding this specific document and/or the zoning regulations rewrite? I realize this request is outside of normal procedure, but there are so many questions regarding the regulation rewrite, and to date, there are no answers. Some questions, some concerns are throughout this document that is paid for by the taxpayer. Taxpayers, our wrestlers, comments, suggestions, and questions. Why shouldn't the regulation rewrite be a neutral document applicable to any and all developers? If not, please explain why. I understand that the Planning and Zoning Commission is waiting for the updated version of the zoning regulations rewrite from the Horstley Witten Group. Why is the rewrite taking so long? Is staff, present company excluded, slow-walking the regulations rewrite for their own reasons? To most of us who are unfamiliar with this process and zoning regulations in general, this January 15, 2021 document is not an easy read. One concern that jumps out is that the majority of the decisions regarding this project will be made when the master plan is written. Is that accurate? Shouldn't the master plan fit into the Planning and Zoning Commission-approved zoning regulations? Again, a more complete understanding of the process would be useful. On page three of the January 15, 2021 document, it states, quote, "One of the goals of this zoning text is to minimize the need for special permits," quote. Exactly what will that allow the developer to add or include to the project after the regulations are rewritten? My greatest concern with this mega-development proposal is density. The project is too large for the property, period. The density section, 6.5-6.D., and the density increase section in the document on page 15 discusses the concept of one-dwelling unit per 5,000 square feet of gross lot area. Then it proceeds to state that the developer may increase the density and that the, quote, "concept was discussed by the Planning and Zoning Commission in March and met with, quote, 'general approval,' quote. Is that accurate? Also, there is a table on page 16 that according to the information in the density increase on page 15 was based on, quote, "PZC feedback," quote. Is that accurate? Part of the reason for these questions is that there is a history of staff, present company excluded, stating that the Planning and Zoning Commission has given, quote, "general approval" to items the commission has not. While I will not pretend to understand the incentive table and the bonus density, a quick read leads to the conclusion that there are at least 21 incentives that will allow the developer, quote, "bonus density." Does bonus, bonus density mean that the density will increase beyond the density level in the Planning and Zoning Commission-approved zoning regulations? There are more questions that I have, but we'll end it here for tonight. Hopefully, the Planning and Zoning Commission will seriously consider my request for a workshop with the commission and concerned residents to answer questions. As the Planning and Zoning Commission moves forward with the regulation rewrite and development of the master plan, please bear in mind that the preferred developer has a public criminal record, including pleading guilty to both perjury and bribing elected officials, among other crimes. For me personally, as a concerned resident, it will be difficult believing anything presented or stated by the developer. I cringe at the thought that town staff signed a development agreement with a criminal whose crimes that he pled guilty to and was convicted of are directly related to his profession. Also unfortunate and very disappointing is the town manager dismissal of the developer's criminal history and the town council's silence. Thank you for your time tonight, and I look forward to hearing back from the commission regarding a planning and zoning workshop with concerned residents.
Let's see. Rayleigh Ann Westervelt.
Apparently, my name hasn't gotten changed yet on this machine. This is Scott Westervelt, actually. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. How are you this evening? You can just wave, I know we can't all talk. Anyhow, I have been looking, I'm calling about, excuse me, my name is Scott Westervelt. I live at 7 Boulder Court, Mystic, Connecticut. And I'm speaking in on the Mystic Oral School site development plan. One of the things that we have talked about at length with, within our own group is trying to find, you know, different things that can fit in that property as opposed to the mega-development that Mr. Ressler has and Mr. Reiner are pushing up there. And looking back at, looking at the regulations, it looks like RU-80 is something that, you know, it's there, it's there for a reason. I'm not sure how it got there, and I'm hoping someone can answer. Because if the state owns it, how does the town have a zoning regulation for that? I apologize, I'm not familiar enough with how that whole process works. But it seems to me that RU-80 is basically a perfect size for the buildings and the development that would be up there. That and one of the land use documents allows for or suggests the potential of assisted living, which is something that the Mystic Oil School would be, I think, well-suited for. And it's something that I believe the neighbors and, or at least myself, can stand behind as something that is reasonable and would fit into the neighborhood as opposed to the mega-development. Additionally, I want to express my own concerns with the preferred developer. Not only with what Roseanne had said about the different bribery charges, he's also been linked, actually, he was building a house down on Long Island where there were questions brought up about the zoning irregularities and the approvals and variances that were granted by the building inspector. And his project was shut down, and the Superior Court on Long Island decided that, or they've made a bold statement that the relationship between Ressler and the building inspector didn't pass the smell test. This concerns me because that lot was vacant for a long time, and there were irregularities in how he absurd, how he got his permits and how he got his variances approved, that sort of thing, which concerns me about his, you know, his character and his ability to be open and honest with the town of Groton. So that concerns me, and it also concerns me greatly of the fact that Mr. John Burt, the town manager, as well as others on the planning staff, are basically quiet about this and haven't said anything. Additionally, I've also, with the developer's proposal that he submitted for the oral school project, there were documents that were missing. They've been requested from a Freedom of Information Act. These include the anti-pollution document as well as the anti-tickback affidavit. Those have not been produced, nor have the score sheet for all of the proposals. So we have no way of knowing how this proposal was actually picked. So those are, those are concerns for me, and I think they should be for everyone that were being treated fairly by the preferred developer. And unfortunately, I realize that you guys are going to be all the last line of defense to make sure that what goes in up at the school is something that's reasonable, that's into the area, and doesn't overwhelm it. Thank you very much for everything that you guys do. And I hope you have a good evening.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Penelope Miller.
Hi, and good evening, commissioners and staff, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Penny Miller. I live at 56 Hancock Drive in Mystic. Many people have said that the size of the proposed Mystic River Bluffs at 931 residential units is too big. To put it in more tangible terms, I would like to compare it to the nearby apartment complexes of Masonicare and Stone Ridge. If you have driven around the road that circumnavigates Masonicare, you have probably been impressed at the huge size of the building. Yet Masonicare houses only 179 units, less than one-fifth of the number proposed for Mystic River Bluffs. You may have stood on, stopped on one of the Nature Center trails and marveled at the massive Stone Ridge complex that houses 270 units, less than one-third of the number of the units proposed for Mystic River Bluffs. I hope this helps you imagine a development over three times the size of Stone Ridge or over five times the size of Masonicare. The housing density of the Mystic River Bluffs project is also far higher when compared to the other two developments. When units per acre are compared among the three projects, Mystic River Bluffs comes out far ahead at over 18 units per acre compared to around 10 units per acre for Masonicare and 8.8, around a little over eight units per acre for Stone Ridge. And this is just taking into consideration new construction at Mystic River Bluffs. More open space will actually be built on, built on at Mystic River Bluffs when you consider 175,000 square feet of existing buildings that are to be converted to commercial and office space, or leased to the town of Groton for recreational purposes. It is time to have a discussion of what is the, a reasonable number of residential units for the Mystic Oral School. Given that the area immediately surrounding the Mystic Oral School is a quiet residential neighborhood, and access to the site is currently limited to low-volume residential streets, many of us would have preferred to see a continuous care retirement community or some type of senior housing, perhaps combined with medical offices, such as was recommended by the consultant study prepared for the Groton Planning and Development, for Groton Planning and Development Services by VHB and Commoin. That type of use, even with a relatively high number of residential units, would not generate a high volume of traffic. The problem with the Gen Z housing that Ressler Homes is proposing is that it will generate a lot of cars and traffic. Mr. Ressler believes he has solved that problem by acquiring the Ferguleski property through which he intends to build a road connecting to the signalized intersection of Cow Hill Road and Ledge Land Drive. But this will create a five-way intersection on Cow Hill Road in between and in close proximity to both the I-95 exit 89 ramps to the south and the intersection of Cow Hill and Lampier Roads to the north. Cow Hill Road is already a bottleneck for traffic commuting between I-95 and the large developments of Fieldcrest, Mystic Highlands, and Deerfield. Cow Hill Road is a state road. Is the state going to widen Cow Hill Road to address this problem? Is it even feasible to widen Cow Hill Road without exercising eminent domain? So how many residential units for Gen Zers can the Mystic Oral School site accommodate without adversely affecting surrounding neighborhoods? This is what we really need to be talking about before new zoning regulations are approved for the Mystic Oral School. In his presentation last week to the day editorial board, Mr. Ressler allowed that he would be open, he would be, quote, "open" to initially seeking zoning approval only for about 330 residential units and building that out before seeking additional approvals, unquote. My response is that 330 units in total is still too many. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Janet Mayer.
Hi, I'm Janet Mayer, 88 Ann Avenue, Mystic, Connecticut. Thank you so much for letting me speak tonight. I really appreciate it. So we are designated a rural residential zoning area for many reasons. We have narrow roads already stressed with mystic traffic and lack of sidewalks. I believe that for a change in zoning, the Groton regulations require an analysis of the current street system, not just the street the development is on. Please consider that this development would be in a rural area, meaning residents would have to drive to almost everything, grocery store, work, library, pharmacy, restaurants, especially young people. They, they drive a lot. The Groton zoning regulation purposes section, oh, sorry, that, yeah, the Groton zoning regulation purposes section includes promoting safety and general welfare of the community, lessening congestion in the streets, preventing overcrowding of population, facilitating adequate provision for transportation, water, sewers, schools, parks, and other requirements, and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the town. So keeping this most appropriate use in mind, I reviewed the Groton 2016 Plan of Conservation and Development. It's called the Adopted P O C D. I know you're familiar with it, which appears to be a very well-done, comprehensive report. In section 2.8, it shows the significant habitat map. To me, it appears that the Mystic Oral School property includes a natural diversity database area in there. Section 2.9 shows a map of physically sensitive to development areas. Based on the map, I think the development area includes steep slope soils which pose issues and possibly flood zones along the river. And most important of all is section 327, map of potential new dwelling units under full build-out. It looks to me there are two to three parcels that make up the oral school property. According to the colored key, these parcels, parcels could accommodate zero to five or 10 to 20 new dwellings per parcel. So I guess what, what I'm saying is if I'm reading this right, and, and actually, who knows, but hopefully I'm reading these maps correctly. Somebody took a lot of time to try to figure out what should go in different places throughout Groton, what makes sense. And according to that map, it looks like our area, the Mystic Oral School, should have very few dwellings there. Certainly, I think that the proposal that's being put forth is way, way too large. So given the Groton Plan of Conservation and Development findings and the clauses on safety and most appropriate use of the land in the Groton zoning regulations, I do not believe that the Mystic River Bluffs proposal conforms with the clear recommendations of these two well-laid-out documents. And as you are well aware, developments should adhere to appropriate zoning, and zoning should not be influenced by developers. So the zoning, in my opinion, and I think, I think you would agree, the zoning should come first before, you know, the development, developer, especially if the developer has a criminal history. I can't help but bring this up. After finding out this news, I was floored. Major agencies were involved in the investigations of this developer, federal, New York State, I mean, there were, there were many. And that really, I find very alarming. So I thank you so much for your time tonight, and again, thank you.
Thank you. Let's see. Hal, yep, Hal Robb.
Hello, I'm Hal Robb. I live at 7 Hancock Drive, and I guess I would just like to second Roseanne Kautowski's request for some kind of, either a special meeting or somehow having the Planning and Zoning Commission help us understand how this is going to work for the Mystic Oral School property. We are, we're part of a group now that's probably over 100 people. And as new people come in, they ask a lot of the same kind of questions that I think you've already heard tonight. And I, and I'm a little bit puzzled because there's this document that's floating around that seems to be being managed by the town. And Mr. Reiner, I think, is the fellow that we're supposed to contact. And I sent him an email about a week ago when he said there is no update date coming, so we don't really know when the next version of that is. And it seems that that document is really being prepared by the town for the developer. And it raises a question in my mind, well, okay, if the town can develop something for a developer to change zoning, can, can people in a neighborhood approach the Planning and Zoning Commission with changes to zoning to sort of protect their area without having a developer behind them? Just, in other words, in this case, can we present to you a set of zoning variance requests that would, that would meet our requirements as opposed to meeting Ressler's requirements, for instance? So those are the kinds of questions that kind of rattle around in my head, and it would really, really be helpful with the circumstances as they are for this Mystic Oral School, if the Planning and Zoning Commission would please consider having a special public meeting that would just discuss the, the process and how this would go ahead, because I think it would help a lot of people understand how it will all play out in the end. Thanks very much for your time. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. I do not see any other hands raised. Excuse me, I do see one more, Becca Welch.
Hello, sorry, I accidentally unraised my hand. I'm Becca Welch from 32 Boulder Court. Thank you for allowing me the chance to speak. I've been listening and learning for months now as I follow the saga of the oral school development. And I'm so disheartened that the planning department and town council seem convinced that the Ressler project makes sense. Tonight, I want to talk about the realities of Oral School Road. Riding a school bus down Oral School is always an adventure. In the spring, the tree branches poke into the open windows, and the kids can strip leaves off them as they drive by. The road is so narrow, there's no way to avoid that. And as a kid riding a bus, that delighted me. As an adult, I am amazed at the courage of the drivers who pilot these large vehicles full of very loud children down those same narrow curves, especially in the winter. Two school buses cannot pass one another on that road, and at certain parts, two cars can't either. Neighbors know how that works, and we take turns. That works with the density that we have now. It is utter madness with hundreds of apartments. There have been several school bus stops along Oral School Road over the years. For example, one at the top of Boulder Court and one each at the top and bottom of Oral School Road. There are no sidewalks on Oral School Road, and there is no room for sidewalks on most of the roadway because it's so narrow. Are we seriously contemplating adding hundreds of cars to a narrow road on which children walk daily to their bus stops and wait by the side of the road for their school bus? That's dangerous, it's wrong, and I fear that it will lead to tragedy. If you must make changes to the zoning, please keep in mind the reality of what exists, and please show regard for the community that is already established and not for the fairy tale visions of developers. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see. Janet Hamilton.
Hello, I'm sorry I was late. I just have two quick questions in the statement. One, has the traffic study been done yet for this development?
I don't think there's been any study that's done for it.
Okay. Right, we did not.
No, the traffic study, okay. Two, has there been a design for the five-legged intersections that will take place at Mystic Street? Hand, uh, Mystic Street and the other developments in the area? Can we see what those will look like?
We don't have any plans for that.
Well, there are no real plans. I mean, formal plans submitted.
Okay. And two other quick things, sorry. Is there any way that you can require that whoever develops the property, since the town people seem to want a pool or a theater, have them required to start it? That is phase one, so you're not left with a decrepit old building at the end that they walk away from? And two, I would, I would like you to consider that the people on this call and the people in this community have been have been volunteers in the schools, volunteers for the town, volunteers making the art show work, all these things. I was personally volunteer of the year for the schools, and it feels like you're not taking me over a developer who has a criminal record. I don't mean to be mean. I've lived in this community for twenty-eight years. I've been part of the junior women's, I've been part of the community. I really hope that you will take a serious look at who you've hired and what the traffic and what you're gonna do with this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Um let's see, Elizabeth NATO. Elizabeth NATO.
Is she muted or?
She's not. Um perhaps we'll we'll come back. Um the connection may maybe be funky here. Let's see, Steve Purdy.
Muted.
Yep.
There we go. Okay, I live at the bottom of Oslo Street, so I'm already familiar with what happens when there are forty or fifty cars lined up um at the end of the day to pick up their children at the school. You can't get get in and out of here. There's no room for emergency vehicles. It's just a disaster. I can't imagine what that will be like with fifteen hundred vehicles on this proposed development. It's unbelievable. If we look at River Road, it already is a problem with bicyclists, walkers, and people that want to go down River Road to go where they need to go today. Put another hundred fifteen, another fifteen hundred of those on that property. There's a lot of pie in the sky here. People are gonna use bicycles. Yeah, they're gonna write, they're gonna run downhill from this location, which was hu- a hundred and fifty feet above sea level, and how are they gonna get back? The whole thing is just really silly. It 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 just doesn't make any sense when you come down to looking at the location of the property, the size, and the density that's being proposed. A thousand units, unbelievable. And fifteen to seventeen hundred cars who will be exiting and entering one or one or two times a day. Yeah, you can all sit there and smile, but this is not something that's to be smiled about. It it is going to cause a huge logistical and social change in this element of the community, and it's gonna be a disaster for for Mystic Connecticut, the part of it that's on the the eastern side of the river. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Um let's see, let's try Elizabeth NATO again and see if she can unmute.
Hello, Elizabeth NATO here.
There you go.
Okay, I my thing says unstable, so I hope that's not a sign. Um I'm at three eighty High Street in Mystic, and I am opposed to this Restler project because I live in a house built in eighteen forty-four on a narrow street that was put in when nobody even rode their horse to town. They walked. There's no way we can widen this street and have anybody who currently lives here have a car. We park on the side of the street, we live on the side of a hill. But High Street and downtown Mystic is not being considered as part of the impacted area of this project. But we all will be impacted by this project. We all know what it's like to try to get through downtown Mystic in the summer, and that's gonna be our everyday reality here. If you walk up and look at the property now, it's lovely, and just imagine it tree to tree filled with cars and four-story buildings, five-story buildings, six-story buildings, parking garages, noise, lights. It it's it's a crime for this historic town for this development to go in. Thank you.
All right, thank you. See, that looks like it for public.
We'll move on to uh site plans. We've S S CSP twenty-one oh one for a cam for Butler Estates. If the applicant would like to make a presentation.
Yeah, so it's like Mark Mo's here. I'm gonna promote him.
All right.
Are you tonight? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can. Okay, um am I up or is there a staff presentation?
No, we'll make the first presentation, then we'll go to the staff and then open it up to the mission for commissioners for any questions or comments they have.
Okay, so this property is um eleven thirty River Road, and it's just north of the cemetery um on River Road.
And would you just state your name and?
Oh, yes. So uh my name is Mark Mo, and I'm the uh project architect for uh Robert Butler, uh current owner of eleven thirty River Road.
Thank you.
Okay, so um what in in the big picture, what we're proposing to do is um we have a demo permit to remove an existing garage which is tight up against a bank that's decaying and eroding onto the structure um at the south end of the property, very close to the uh the cemetery property line. Um there was a previously approved uh through through Z B A uh addition that connected the garage to the main house. Um and we are seeking to um actually build out that uh that particular uh structure. So the the blue shows um the existing house with the existing garage, and the green in between shows the previously approved addition that was built. When when my client purchased the property, um there is a very aggressive uh elevation change between eleven thirty River Road and the upper level of the uh cemetery. And there's a tremendous amount of erosion that's going on up against the building, which has caused decay. Uh also, the 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 garage that's there, uh we we found um had an apartment in it that had some code deficiencies, and it it would just cost too much money to bring this into compliance and and to protect it. So the the demolition of it is is the best thing. And should also point out that um I've I tried with the with my own car to pull into that garage and maneuver myself between the garage and the house and back out. And I almost had to have a tow truck get me out of there. It it doesn't work. Um it worked as a garage where you bring wheelbarrows in, but that's about it. Uh so in the big picture, we wanna we wanna remove the garage and rebuild it and and then rebuild and and then construct the addition that that conjoins the house over to the garage. Um the boathouse is a is a is another kingpin within the within the master plan of the property. It it's quite a storied property going, you know, going back to the original owner who constructed the uh the original house. And uh we've got photographs and documentation that shows um in a very active boathouse condition. Uh the boathouse is kind of the golden rod structure to the upper right that you see. And there below the floor, uh we've removed part of the floor, and there's actually a track system to bring a boat within the facility right from the Mystic River. Um so my client would like to reinstate that water-dependent use, um which is something that we're going to do down the road. Um that said, we are uh we're within the cam zone. Um so you can see a a deep red line that runs through the property of which the existing garage, the existing boathouse, and the existing structure already exist eastward of the of the cam line. Um so we're here for cam approval to be able to uh remove the garage as it exists and construct that addition which was a which was granted um by the Z B A years ago. Um I would also point out that um in 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 the big picture, to preserve the property, my client has negotiated a a property line adjustment with the Saint Patrick Cemetery so that um so that he has control over the erosion situation that's going on on the hill. And they thought that that was a great idea to put that in his hands. Uh the the foundation and and the main floor walls of the garage will be pretty uh substantial concrete retaining walls. Uh I I mean, it it's a um it's a twenty-foot differential of a very gravelly material that's just kind of falling out of the bank there. Um so that property line uh has been adjusted and um and based on that, we seek to put in the foundations and the structure that will be required to um to protect the property and and basically restore components of it back to its original state as a water-dependent use with the boats.
Anything else? So Bruce, do you have uh anything in addition to a report?
Uh sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is Bruce Ofrin from Office of Planning and Development Services. Um Mr. Como, um you know, summarized that very well. I don't have too much more to add on just that, you know, this is here because of the coastal setback. Um we review anything um within fifty feet, definitely from the coastal jurisdiction line. This is about thirty-two feet. But as um as Mr. Comeau mentioned, they received a variance from the can setback back in nineteen ninety-nine. So that still stands today. Um and this addition was just never constructed, so um they're all set with the variance. They're just coming in for coastal site plan approval because it is so close to the coastal jurisdiction line associated with the Mystic River right here. Um yeah, that that that's basically it for this. Um there's some site grading and modifications to the driveway as well. Um there are um sediment and erosion controls in place right now and that remain in place during the construction. Um I I will go out there and inspect before they really start tearing this apart or or constructing this or any other land alterations. Um so it I I think the uh, you know, the coastal jurisdiction, the coastal feature is is pretty protected with this with this proposal.
So all we're really addressing is just the cam and just for the addition and the garage?
Just the addition in the garage. The the boathouse is really just kind of um interior modifications. It wouldn't require a cam.
But that's not subject to this approval.
No, there's no footprint changes or anything associated with the boathouse. So it's just the addition and the reconstruction of the garage.
Mm-hmm. And the retaining, well, I guess that's part of the garage is part of the retaining wall. Okay. So I'll open it up to uh commissioners if they have any uh any questions or comments. I'll start with you, Michael Kane.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
Hal, uh do you have any uh questions, concerns?
Question, I have no questions or concerns.
Let's see, so.
All right, I have no questions or concerns. Thank you.
Steve, do you have any?
Just a quick one on the the boathouse is currently being used as boathouse?
That's a good question. The boathouse, it it was being used as a boathouse from what I understand. It's it's floor covers the the trolley that came in from the river. Um my client owns a Duffy Boat Business and would actually like to maintain those boats within the boathouse. Uh so we met with Doc O about removing the floor and and reinstating that that traditional use water-dependent use of the uh of the trolley bringing the boats in. It's 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 it was cleaned out, and it's just a big wide open space right now. I suppose it probably had a boat in it before, but I'm not really sure.
Yeah, just when I think of boathouse, I just think of, you know, a place to store a boat, but you mentioned something about maintenance?
Yep, yep, just just for easy access uh to and from the river. The the foundation on the east side of the boathouse is very unique in that it's it's got an opening uh and the water, the ebbs and flows right under the building. Um so Eldridge, who built who built it, uh um had a really neat situation where the the boats would float into the boathouse uh for for whatever maintenance that that they needed on.
But I mean, this is not intended to be a business?
No, no.
Of maintaining boats?
Yep.
And dry sail the boats.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay, Kevin, do you have any?
No, but um I think I actually have pictures when Eldridge owned this, and I believe um I may show the riverside of it. But it seems pretty clear to me um in as long as the staff monitors with any technical considerations, I think it's in good shape.
I have no questions or concerns with the application because no one has any uh and we have a proposed motion. Has this been uh given to the applicant, Bruce?
Yes, I did uh email today to the applicant.
Okay, I assume he has no comments, concerns with it?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion then to approve coastal site plan number twenty-one dash oh one Butler Estates, eleven thirty River Road, subject to the following modifications. One, technical items as raised by staff shall be addressed. Two, that there shall be no land disturbance seaward of the silt fence line demarcated on on the plan. Three, that all construction confirms conforms NFIP FEMA flood zone regulations and all requirements of section seven point two of the zoning regulations. In approving this application, the commission finds that the proposed activity is modified, is consistent with all applicable goals and policies in CGS twenty-two A dash ninety-two, and that it incorporates reasonable measures which would mitigate the adverse impacts of the proposed activity on coastal resources. Is there a second?
A second.
Moving second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, they'll vote on the the motion for the uh cam for site plan twenty-one oh one. All those in favor say aye, aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion is carried unanimously.
Hey, thank you.
Good luck with your historic endeavors.
Thanks. No good deed goes unpunished.
Get your Marine Railway reactivated, right? That was common on lakes, you know, to do that.
It was. It's a very unique property.
No, they, no, on lakes, they withdrew that to keep the boat out of the water, so it would only be put in the water when it was and they would keep.
It was there. It's it's quite intriguing.
But that, and a lot of lake places, they're always.
Yeah.
Okay. Next item is uh all business complete streets presentation and discussion.
Yeah, so so Brian Kent is here to review the presentation that he um gave to the council last year. Uh the council is interested in the planning and zoning commissions' take on complete streets and whether or not a complete street policy uh should be developed and adopted. Um I just also want to note for the record that Barbara Tarbox is now in attendance. So Brian, you should be able to share your screen.
Okay, thank you, Deb. Let's see how this works here.
There you go.
So I'm hoping you're getting a full screen view here and not just a window. Are you getting as large a view as you think you can have on a share?
We're good.
I think so.
Great, okay, thank you. Great, okay, thank you. Good evening. Thank you, uh, planning and zoning commission members for giving Bike Grotton an opportunity to make this presentation. My name is Brian Kent. I'm a Grotton resident at one oh one Prospect Hill Road. I'm principal of Kent Frost Landscape Architecture, a longtime, uh, design and planning firm in Mystic. I am also president of Bike Grotton and I am vice chair of the Connecticut Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Board. What I'm going to do tonight is, uh, go through this presentation. You've had a chance to, uh, review it in your packet, so I'm not going to go into every detail. But I am going to detour into some more updated information. This, uh, original presentation was made last September. There have been important developments since then that you should be aware of, so we're going to, we're gonna, uh, take a brief detour into some of those. So we begin by defining what complete streets are, since this is a relatively new concept for many people. Basically refers to the approach where the entire right of way that a roadway is contained within or which. Any other kind of transportation corridor is contained within. Is planned in, and it really just, just conceived of as having much more than a, than a roadway in it. That it supports the safe, um, uh, mobility for all types of users, not just those that are driving. Motorized vehicles. So these include people of all ages and abilities. And as you, as you, as you know, on the extreme edges of, of our population, there are people that just don't drive. The children and the, and the oldest adults. So regardless of whether they are traveling as drivers, pedestrians, bicyclists, or users of public transportation, they, they are entitled to. To, to equitable, uh, resources and facilities in these right of ways. So this concept, it encompasses all of the approaches, including planning, designing and operating. Of the rights of way with all the users in mind. So this is a real paradigm shift from how. Public Works Departments and Transportation Engineers and Departments of Transportation at state and federal level have. Dealt with, with road right of ways for most of the twentieth century and part of the twenty first, but things are changing and that's what we're talking about tonight. So there are complete street policies. They're set at the state level, the regional level. And at local levels and tonight, we're, we're going to talk mostly, we're going to focus on what can be done at the local level. Let's see, I'm not getting in advance here. There we go. So the kinds of facilities that you find in complete streets, uh, projects and, um, uh, communities are. Sidewalks, that's obvious. Bike lanes, maybe obvious, but obviously not evident in, in. Our, our part of, of, uh, of the world here. Bus lanes, public transportation stops. Crossing opportunities, crosswalks, meeting islands, signals that allow pedestrians safe crossings. Curb extensions. These are like the, the bulb outs in downtown Mystic where, where there's more space for pedestrians to gather and the. Crossing is, the distance is shorter and the pedestrian is more visible, uh, to the motorists. Uh, and different kinds of modified lanes, street gates, streetscape treatments and landscape treatments. The impact of all of these when, um, employed in a community is to reduce motor vehicle related crashes and pedestrian risks. So safety is the first justification for doing this and this is where we always start. This makes. Roadway safer, which is really needed. As, as well as bicycle risk when well-designed bicycle specific infrastructure is included. This is, this information is based on research. They can promote walking and bicycling by, by providing safer places to achieve physical activity through transportation. And that's what the whole idea of, of contact sensitive design and, um, and, and, uh, active living. Walkability, these are all the concepts that you are, you're hopefully familiar with. So to review, complete streets improve safety, improve health and environment. They strengthen economies. I'll talk about that a little more. They reduce costs in that well-designed project from the beginning doesn't need retrofit later, which always costs more. They provide choices that refers to giving residents and visitors to a community choices and how to get around. And they address inequities. That last concept has become much more visible and important in the past. Year or two. So with regards to safety, the data shows that more than forty percent of pedestrian fatalities occur where there is no available crosswalk. This is the least expensive kind of complete street improvement, a crosswalk. But because roadways have been designed to promote what's called efficiency or. In transportation engineering parlance, level of service. The priority has been to reduce the, um, the, the, uh, constraints. On faster, smoother travel. So crosswalks have been considered constraints on faster, more efficient. Travel for vehicles. The result of that is lots of pedestrian fatalities and it's been steadily rising. If you've paid any attention to what's been happening on our streets, there have been growing numbers of pedestrian injuries and fatalities. Also including people on bicycles. So what the graph on the right shows is that when traffic speeds are low, say twenty miles per hour, the probability of a pedestrian fatality is also low. And as speed increases, fatalities increase. Now you may be aware that at the, um, Connecticut. Legislature currently, there's a pedestrian safety bill that hopefully will be voted on this session that gives local communities. Like Grotton, the ability to do things like set speed limits on their local roads, which previously. You have not been able to do without going through the State Office of, um, Traffic. Which is a laborious and typically futile effort. You can also apply for the, um, authority to designate a pedestrian safety zone in a congested or an urbanized village. Such as downtown Mystic or perhaps, um, uh, Grotton Center, city of Grotton. Things, uh, street or, uh, downtown Grotton are the types of areas that could be eligible. And there are other. Uh, features of that bill that would benefit Grotton. Of course, the concept and the approach to complete streets benefits children. It gives them dedicated safe spaces for bicycling and walking. Helps them be active and gain independence. More than one third of kids and teens are overweight or obese, mostly from inactivity. Being physically active helps kids learn and improve their mental health. These are obvious, but need to be stated. Older adults, again, this is the other end of the spectrum. By twenty twenty five, nearly one in five Americans will be sixty five or older, including me, many of you. About half of all non-drivers over the age of sixty five like to be able to get out of their houses or their dwellings more often. So complete streets equal better design for older folks driving, biking, walking. Complete streets equal. Allowing these people to stay active and involved in communities. I know you've heard it at the planning commission level. Many people in Grotton would like to be able to stay in their homes. This is referred to as aging in place, but it's becoming more and more difficult if they can safely. Get out of their dwellings and into the community to shop and to, uh, run their errands and to do other things that are healthy activities. They're more likely to stay in place. People with disabilities need to be able to, uh, uh, have mobility through the community. And this, these features give them more independence. So when you boil it down, you have organizations like the CDC and others. That are saying unequivocally complete streets policies are a strategy to prevent obesity. Another reason for doing this, this resonates with other sectors, um, of the economy, particularly small businesses. That are competing for customers. In this past year of COVID and in the new age of digital, uh, shopping. Having people out on the street, shopping locally is very important. So it's mostly just been congestion until recently that providing bicycle and pedestrian facilities improves and, and. Stimulates businesses, but a more recent study from twenty twenty by Portland State University that looked specifically at. Communities across the country, they found that bike lanes specifically can benefit local businesses. That the level of economic activity increases where bike lanes are, um, uh, existing in commercial corridors. They found millennials want to work in areas of high quality transportation and high quality of life. And businesses that encourage active transportation attract young professionals. That's a theme that's been resonating in Grotton. For the fat past few years. Another study found that people who arrive to a business on bikes spend less per visit. But visit more often resulting in more money spent overall per month and that just makes a lot of sense. If you live close enough, can, can bike conveniently, you'll visit more often to those places that you enjoy. These features, these benefits provide choices. Transportation is a large expense for most families, eighteen percent. For low income households as much as fifty five percent of their budget spent on transportation. And these, um, options give people more control. And then one of the last features is of course cleaner water and air and the reason that, uh. Occurs is because if you don't have to drive, you're not polluting through, uh, auto emissions. And complete streets can be designed so that, um, uh, runoff, stormwater can be absorbed into. Various features, trees and other landscaping can absorb pollutants. So why should Grotton consider a complete streets policy? The answer is to ensure that the entire right of way is planned, designed, constructed, operated and maintained to provide safe access for all users. To change the practice integrating the needs of all road users into everyday transportation and design practices. And to gradually create a complete network of streets that serve all users. Now here's Grotton. You recognize the roadways here and what stands out are the state routes. Your east-west routes like one eighty four, one. Two fifteen, which meanders south and then west. And then the other roadways, Eastern Point. Allen Street, Route one seventeen, Route twelve, these are all state roads. So these, these right of ways are owned by the state of Connecticut. And controlled by the Connecticut Department of Transportation. The town of Grotton has virtually no control over what happens in these right of ways. And there has been historically. A difficult relationship when it comes to changing anything inside of these rights of ways, including sidewalks. But times are changing. The state is being much more open and proactive. This is a screenshot from the state of, the DOT's new complete streets webpage. So they've consolidated all of the different, um, resources and information, their maps, their new pedestrian guide. Their, their various links in one place. And they're making positive changes on their roadways and you've all have seen improved sidewalks and crosswalks. And signals and signage promoting pedestrian safety. So the state is making strides. Another thing that's going on at the state level is, and is at the legislature currently. The Transportation and Climate Initiative Program. So, so DOT deep. And, uh, leadership as well as other states in New England. So this is a regional program. And we, we have a window of opportunity currently to, to enact this. To cap and reduce greenhouse gases, uh, that are related, that are emitted from transportation. Generate revenue to decarbonize and modernize the transportation system and create new economic opportunity. And to invest in overburdened and underserved communities that create healthier places to live. So earlier I pointed out that about a third of, of, of automotive, uh, emissions. Can, or a third of emissions in, in, in the United States come from, uh, transportation. In Connecticut, it's thirty eight percent. And that in order to reduce emissions, uh, twenty nine percent to meet the governor's, uh. Goals. To reach below two thousand fourteen levels, uh, we need to reduce twenty nine percent of current emissions. So how will that happen if this is enacted? Well, the funding from the cap and invest program will be put into state and local communities. For things like converting buses and diesel trucks to electric, improving transit. Bicycle and pedestrian safety improvements, intersection, roundabout conversions, trail improvements. So those are some of the ones that. Are, are more, uh, germane to what we're talking about tonight and specifically, and this is from a, a deep. And DOT presentation given to the Bike Ped Board last month. Trail investments, roundabout conversions. In Grotton, you know, we have a few different projects that are. Have been proposed but haven't been funded, like the Tri-Town Trail. I'll talk about another one here and then, and a couple more slides. So again, saving money. Allowing for, uh, low cost, high impact changes, things like these pop up. Public event spaces in underutilized pavement. And to apply solutions across a community that address systematic inequalities. And I talked about this a little bit earlier. Last week at a webinar, the National Collaborative on Childhood Obesity Research made a presentation on the latest research. This organization is a collaboration of the CDC, the National Institutes of Health, the Robert Wood. Johnson Foundation, the Department of Agriculture, all working together to share insights and expertise to strengthen the research. That finds ways to focus on efforts that will have potential to benefit children, teens and their families in the communities in which they live. And what they find is that children from under-resourced communities and diverse racial, ethnic and cultural backgrounds are less likely to meet national guidelines. For physical activity. The social and built environment limitations on under-resourced youth from communities of color have substantially higher levels of overweight and obesity. Compared to their Caucasian counterparts. So just grabbing a few screens from their presentation, these are some of the most important measures that can counteract. Those, uh, challenges. Number one, built environment approaches that combine one or more interventions to improve pedestrian bicycle or transit. Transportation systems essentially complete, complete streets with one or more land use environmental designer interventions. Destinations, parks, schools, et cetera. And secondly, interventions to increase active travel to school. You've all heard of the. Safe routes to school programs, which unfortunately were discontinued some years ago for lack of funding. Well, funding is coming back and fortunately for Grotton. The Community Connectivity Program, which the state, uh, found funding for this past year and currently. Opened for grant applications last fall and, and the Parks and Rec, Parks and Rec Department. Went after this grant and they were looking at the Paquonic Bridge Fort Hill neighborhood area as a good fit for some improvements. Through the bicycle and pedestrian, uh, environment. And they came to Bike Grotton and they asked what we thought about it. And at that time, we recognized that there were some concerns and some issues. That were a result of unfamiliarity with bicycle pedestrian facilities and complete street principles. So Bike Grotton worked with Parks and Rec and then with the Public Works Department of Grotton. To revise the, uh, application for the grant so that it met all the current standards for facilities. And the grant was submitted and it was, uh, awarded. So ten, uh, communities in the state of Connecticut received grants out of over. So ten communities in the state of Connecticut received grants out of over forty applications. So Groton got its foot in the door finally with a grant for bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And what this will do is it will provide on-street sharrows and signage, giving space on the roadway for bicycles and a new multi-use path through Sutton Park. And basically completing a loop that you can see in green. It will also connect to the end of the, the GNS Trolley Trail, which comes out of Haley Farm, which is the, 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 the route of the, of the old original trolley trail from the Thames River all the way to Westerly. Currently partially paved, it will be completed by detouring onto Industrial Drive. There is also the proposed Eastern Shoreline Path alignment there. You may have heard something about that. That's a project proposed in a recent regional plan for a coastal route. And the Tri-Town Trail Terminus here is down at the south. The reason it says site here is because this is a site of a pump track for bicycles that Bike Groton is currently raising money to construct with permission from the town. This is the, the actual document that was submitted to the state for the grant. And this is what Bike Groton collaborated with Parks and Rec and with Public Works on preparing in order to be a successful application. At the regional level, we've got the Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments, where all the transportation funding for our region and much of which comes to Groton itself is channeled through. This is the, the Regional Bike and Pedestrian Plan from two thousand nineteen. On the left is the regional routes. On the right is a, just the cover of the Town of Groton Bike and Pedestrian Improvements Toolkit, which goes into detail about what Groton can do to improve the environment for bikes and pedestrians. So what that sums up, I think, obviously, is the need for coordination between the town and the state and advocacy organizations like Bike Groton. Those are really the, what are referred to as the three legs of the stool that provide for progress with complete street initiatives in a community. So you have a professional now organization, advocacy organization with Bike Groton. You've got various departments in the town that when they work together can be successful in attracting support, grants and, and incremental improvements. That's why the policy itself is so important because it puts everybody on the same page in the town. It streamlines and it consolidates standard operating procedures so that Parks and Rec and Public Works and Planning and Advocates are all on the same page and can work effectively together. We're not inventing the wheel in Connecticut. You can see these are some of the towns that have already implemented complete street policies. Talk to any of them and they will tell you it has been a real benefit. It's helped with grant funding. It's helped with community pride. It's helped with safety and economic development and health and wellness in their communities. Thank you very much. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Does anyone on the commission have any questions?
Jeff, this is Kevin. I have a couple.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So number one, you talked about aging in place where it's becoming more difficult. Where I've worked a lot in my career with Centers for Medicare and Medicaid as well as Social Security. It's actually the opposite. It's becoming much easier. Were you citing something particularly, particular there Kent, as far as that one statement was concerned?
Well, it comes from, from, from data and anecdotal evidence from a variety of communities, not just, not just here locally that people who age in residential settings where there are not safe places to walk attached to their, to their homes and neighborhoods are more isolated in their homes and neighborhoods. Now, I don't know if you're referring to enhanced transit systems or ride sharing, but the fact is that the built environment has not improved in many communities because there hasn't been a systematic and comprehensive investment in those communities in sidewalks, in trails, in safe routes for elderly people to get out and walk primarily for fitness and for, for errands, et cetera.
Yeah. And so therefore, what's the strategy say for a Groton and Mystic? I mean, as a complete solution, you try to address, as you know, we have a varied type of zoning. We have small communities, you know, built in the eighteen hundreds, pretty difficult. You try to pick like you're showing us there around the Paquonic Bridge area and say, our strategy is to make a dent in this? Or is it much more comprehensive that you're trying to shape this strategy across our entire town, Brian?
You know, it's, it's, that's a great question. It's both of those approaches. It's targeted and it's, and it's generalized. And many communities like Groton have denser urban centers and rural, less dense areas. And it is important to know that in these rural, less dense areas, uniform sidewalks along all the roads just may not be feasible. It may not be cost effective. It may not be physically feasible because of sorts, the sorts of things you mentioned. Narrow rights of ways, stone walls, old trees, historic buildings, that sort of thing. But in the, in the denser areas, it can be targeted and it can be, it can be much more systematic, especially in the neighborhoods around schools where sidewalks and safe ways to, to, to get between residences, neighborhoods and schools can have a large impact on the, you know, the health and wellness of students. Parents can also reduce the carpooling and the, the, you know, single occupancy driving kids to school and home again that we see so much these days.
Okay. Well, here's the last question. It's a very quick one. So you know, we're only going to get a, I presume a certain amount of money. You seem to know Groton pretty well, so I was pretty impressed by that. That was good. Where would you spend your, where would you spend this money?
So the approach here is, is not to think about it in terms of where am I going to spend the money specifically? It's to think about how we can incorporate small incremental improvements into the standard operating procedures of public work. So for example, when a roadway is slated for resurfacing, to evaluate for what can be done on that roadway to make it more of a complete street. Now, what could happen is that rather than a mile of new asphalt for the same amount of money, we may only get three quarters of a mile. But at the, as a benefit, we get sidewalks and perhaps other improvements. So it's a measured approach, but it also is a way to, to move Groton's eligibility for grant funding much higher on the, the list of competing applications because we demonstrate that we have a policy in place and we're making strides to enact these kinds of programs. And towns that have done that have seen the benefit. I wrote the complete streets policies for, for Portland and for Middletown. And Portland in particular, a small town with a village center, has been very successful in receiving grant funding because they've had a clear vision for what the town wants and what it needs. And they've been going after it in a targeted way. So I would say that that's the general approach, specifically the Eastern Shoreline Path that I, that I, that I mentioned is a local and a regional facility that has great potential. It's trails, it's on-street improvements. I really think that these kind of signature projects, the Tri-Town Trail, the, the Trolley Line Trail, filling in empty stretches of roadways like on Route one near I ninety five and other places can have a huge impact on changing the culture and, and embracing this approach.
Thank you. That's all from me, Jeff.
Does anyone else have any questions?
Yeah, I've got something that just, I was just wondering, I'm not sure I see it from report, but there's sort of two different levels of, of mostly bicycle issues that we have in the town. Or typically, then some of them are addressed by things like Trolley Trail and the Tri-Town Trail. These are terrific endeavors, but mostly geared for people who already like to get onto a bicycle. Where the kind of low hanging fruit is, the, the thing that makes, shall we say, like Copenhagen successful, is getting people just out of their houses. And they don't think twice about jumping onto a little bicycle that they, is semi-rusted. And that's how they get to Applebee's. Those are two different things. You can do trunk lines to get you long distances. But then what we actually really need, that would really be, to me, is the low hanging fruit is to get from our denser cores of, you know, Branford Manor and places on Paquonic and Drauzdick and get them into downtown, what we'd like to be our downtown. But they're not, those aren't trunk lines. We're talking about just little neighborhood things and passing around the fringes of other things. Are those separated out in some way? Because one confuses the other. If the big target is to get these great big nice main trunk lines going, then no one's looking at just making the regular streets be the way to go.
Well, I'll say again, it's, it's, it's a, it's a multi-pronged approach. So trunk lines are very important. And if you look at the now sixteen-year-old Groton Bicycle Pedestrian and Trails Master Plan, you'll see some of those trunk lines were identified there and they were pulled out and they were, they were, they were, they were detailed. So there's a, there's an east-west corridor plan in, in that document that looks at connecting Mystic to the city of Groton with specific recognition of the potential for more people that work in the city but live in Groton to use bicycles to get to work. Now, there are some, there are some dedicated people, you may know some of them, I know certainly know some of them, that live in, in Groton. And they ride bikes into Pfizer and EB and other employers in the city. But they have to navigate through rough terrain, through unsuitable conditions and on roadways that aren't necessarily safe. So trunk lines are important. But the, 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 the small improvements, like just continuing a sidewalk where it ends with no option for continuing is also just as important. The challenge, of course, is we live in a, we live in a, a community that is shaped by colonial land use patterns and right of ways. And so there are places where the right of way is so narrow that it's going to be very challenging to say continue a sidewalk. That's the difference between us, or one of them anyway, in Copenhagen. Or even out in the Western United States where roads were laid out at a later date and right of ways were more uniform. So we have particular challenges in Groton, as in much of New England. But that doesn't mean we can't still do the best we can to make these places better and safer.
But we, we actually have, I mean, we have two different development things. One was developing colonial days, the other one was development that's caused by the glaciers. We have three enormous ridges that without an electric assist bike, most people can't get across without working up a pretty good sweat. So back to my, I just want to go to Applebee's, how do I get there? I'm not riding my bike because I need to take a shower when I got there. So there's some places which will, will have to remain sort of inaccessible. And even though it looks really nice on the list, on the, on the map to say, look, let's just get a, a bike group on Route one. There are some hills that it will never be tolerable for seventy percent of the population. And so it seems like that we shouldn't get too worked up about those. And we should be stretches, stressing the places where it's more on the flats. That's why I kind of pushed on the, on the west side of Route one and things that are close to Route one in, near the, nearer the west side of town where it sort of flattens out and you can get thousands of people as opposed to many hundreds of people on the east side of town. I live on the east side of town. I'd love it to be more bicycle friendly. But it seems to me the low hanging fruit by tenfold is on the west side of town, not trying to connect people in Mystic to EB.
That may be, that may be correct in today's world, but you mentioned electric bikes. And electric bikes are already here and they are becoming much more evident. Their prices are coming down. More and more people will be riding e-bikes and they will be able to attain these, these hillsides that you're, that you're concerned about now. That is coming and there's no question that's going to change the landscape of bicycling in this country, in this community. I will point out that the, that the Eastern Shoreline Path, which includes the, the GNS Trolley Trail, is a coastal route from Mystic to city of Groton that does not traverse very many hills. It goes around Fort Hill and it, it is a low stress route. There are ways, there are places where, and that's a term that's used often in, in this world, low stress bicycle networks are what you find in Copenhagen and what I think you're talking about on the west side of town. But there are more opportunities in other places as well.
I, I have a, a question over, over developing a policy and what happens with it. What, what have you seen in, in areas that have a policy that somebody keeps pushing the policy forward rather than just putting, writing up a few words and putting them on a bookshelf somewhere? Who, who would you envision that would, would have the drive to force completion with some of these projects? Or maybe change people's attitudes?
Like the residents of the town of Groton. And, and, and they, and they, and the advocacy organization like Bike Groton that is engaged and is in frequent communication with department heads, with town councilors, with planning and zoning commission members on a personal basis and on a public basis. And that is what has been absent in Groton from the beginning is, is an advocacy voice. And now we have it and that's why we're here. And we're not, we're not going away if a complete street policy is adopted. We are, we are very interested in its implementation and its adherence by the various parts of the government. And we also, we, we hope that members of the town government, the, the heads of the departments and that the office of the manager will support this and see the value in it. And we'll make sure that it's part of the standard operating procedure. And once it becomes institutionalized, it's just like any other, you know, government policies that are beneficial and that are, that are practiced uniformly.
But somebody has to be appointed as responsible to, I guess, maybe the town manager or somebody.
Well, a typical policy has, has performance standards, Jeff. And those often involve annual reporting on what has taken place over the previous year. And also the typical policy includes a procedure whereby a project cannot be removed from a complete street activity without justification. So those are referred to as waivers and their forms. So if we write a policy that actually has requirements for reporting, performance and waivers for removal, you know, so for example, of rural road to be resurfaced, every, every resurfacing project would need to be checked for its complete streets eligibility. And there could be a checklist. It could say our sidewalks eligible here. If Public Works and, and Planning say no sidewalk is, there's just no way that a sidewalk works here. Well, then that is, that is an item on the waiver. So it's not just simple. sidewalk is, there's just no way that a sidewalk works here. Well, then that is that is an item on the waiver. So it's not just simply let's ignore this policy. It's it's a it's a it's a form, it's a procedure. And as long as you have people like Bike Grotton that are checking up on what's going on with particular projects and activities, you've got some oversight from the from the public.
I just, I don't know. It's a whole different attitude.
Well, I just think I love the advocacy because Jeff, you're questioning that. But if Grotton named someone who owns the CS policy, you're going to get this done a lot quicker.
That's what I think. If you don't
I agree.
Somebody name who's responsible to report on it.
That's right.
To make sure that everybody else is doing their part, at least to get it started.
Many, any municipalities appoint a person to be a bicycle pedestrian coordinator or that sort of a position or that sort of responsibility. And we would certainly endorse some allocation of resources for that. We are not asking the town to spend specific funding at this point. We're just asking for consideration of the policy.
Yeah, it's an it's an attitude or a policy that, but it would take a lot of changing other people's behavior.
Amen.
And it's hard to get people either they have resistance or it's just the time and effort that takes away from their other tasks that they have. And so it's difficult. But it's like the school system, they they got away from all these neighborhood schools because they think it saves money. But I think that has a negative impact, like you say, on kids walking to school. They don't do that anymore. They all ride school buses or they have school buses that have one kid in them and the rest drive. And that's not good.
Do you by chance know what it was that sometime in the last ten or fifteen years, I think, changed in Brooklyn, New York? Brooklyn, New York is now looking like, starting to look like Copenhagen. It's
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. What changed? I can tell you what changed.
What 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 was it that that pivoted it? Because I don't, I wasn't that familiar with it twenty five years ago, but I don't think there was anything like that. And now they've done remarkable things, right down to closing off sections of streets and dramatically reducing the size of roadways. It's just, they just completely rethought what they were doing. And that didn't happen. It seems to have happened kind of suddenly. Was there, do you know, was there a change?
Absolutely. There was a change in leadership.
Was it?
The the successor to Rudolph Giuliani began to implement, began appointing people to positions of authority in the in the transportation department and plane departments. And these people began to look at ways to do very low cost. They called it quicker, lighter, cheaper. That was the motto in New York City twenty years ago. Now, the Giuliani administration did their best to tear down the High Line. But the proponents outlasted. And when that administration was voted out, the new administration supported. And if you've been to the High Line in Lower Manhattan, you can see what something like that has done. It's not just Brooklyn. It's it's also other parts of the city and other boroughs. But it's a like, like Jeff said, it's a change in attitude. And it's when the various leaders and administrators throughout the government get together with the advocates and they work together. And that's what's happening in New York and other cities. In in and we could talk all night about what's going on in other places in the country, including some of the cities in New England, even Hartford has has embarked on an ambitious complete streets plan for the for the city. But New Haven's another good example. So there's no reason why Grotton can't do it also.
So who runs the policy?
All right. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Actually, that's where I was going to jump in. So so the council heard this presentation as well as as Brian had noted. And the town manager drafted a policy. And he's interested in your input in the policy. So I'm going to get that to you for the next meeting, provided it's a light agenda. Along with maybe some other examples from across Connecticut so that you can take a look at it and and provide the council your input.
Okay. So the council is is supporting this effort.
They are. Yes, they are.
Where the town manager was given direction to.
That's right.
Things done. Okay.
And yeah, just one last comment that the the regional plan, the the Southeast Connecticut Council of Governments Bicycle and Pedestrian Regional Plan. It includes a sample complete street policy in the appendix. So that's another source. It's very similar to the one that Mr. Burke has has put together. There's there's common ingredients in these types of policies.
Yeah, it's not just writing the words. It's getting somebody to institute it, you know, and put it in play with some actions. That's the hard part. Because I think in our P O C D, we do talk about completed street policies. All right. Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you.
Brian.
All right. So we'll see something in the near future.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you for your attendance.
All right. Brian, can you stop your share? And if not, I can.
Yeah, I can. Here we go.
Very good.
All right.
You know, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to have my video turned off. I couldn't access it. So you'll just have to imagine what I look like. I have my bicycling cap on.
I think you're still sharing your screen.
Thank you.
Ah, I told it to stop, but let me just see.
Somebody, something else is up to.
It says I'm viewing Diane's screen now.
Ah, there we go. So she's ready for the next item.
Thank you all.
So our next item is zoning text amendments. Diane, I guess this is yours. You're muted, Diane. Maybe she's feeding her cats.
Cats are upstairs crying.
Oh, we're taking too long.
Yes.
They don't like being left alone.
Yeah. Anyways, what I provide you tonight was, or in your packet was a list of draft changes. And after last meeting, I went, we went through and did a few minor changes to the things we talked about. And I only provided the pages that we've actually changed from the packet that you had last time. So this is basically, again, like we talked about, this is to actually put together an application to submit to you and to do all the a formal application for these changes. So even if, I think, even if you're totally not okay with a few things tonight, maybe we should move forward and just get the application together because there are minor tweaks and changes you can do through the public hearing process. And of course, you're going to have the public making comments on some of these things too. So it could be longer process just after we start the application in the public hearing process. So I don't know if you want to go through each one again, or if you think everything's okay to actually put it together as an application, or are there some things you want to talk about tonight? I don't know.
The things that got changed, should we go over those or at least one case, you need needed some input.
Okay, um, the things that were changed are in yellow, highlighted in yellow in your packet. So if we go to the few of the texts, we can just go over them briefly.
Yeah.
Not for. It looks like page one, yeah, is the definition of mansard roofs?
Right. On the mansard roof, we talked about that. Mr. Zod had talked about how he wanted it potentially, the height proposed or the definition for height for mansard roofs. It's still up in the air. From a staff standpoint, we wrote that the more we thought about it, the more we realized that if you did measure it from the midpoint, it it's a flat roof typically. And typically, there's going to be equipment on top of that flat roof. So once there's equipment up there, unless it meets, unless it falls under that ten percent exemption, you would have to measure it to the top of the equipment. So it could get confusing, especially if somebody came in and said, well, I'm not putting any equipment up on the top of the roof. I want it measured to the, you know, halfway up the roof line for my building height. And then two years later, equipment goes on top of the roof. And then where are you at that point?
I I think what Hal was talking about was, I didn't realize this, but I I looked on Wikipedia to see what a mansard roof was. And if you look there, it really shows a mansard roof looks more like a gable roof, the original design process. But the way we have, the way you've drawn it now, I think you're defining what the mansard roof looks like. It has a flat surface. If you really look at the true definition of it, it would come under the gable gable roof view for a man, a true mansard roof, which is already there. And and I think what we have is adequate.
If you want to, if you kind of, if you want to talk about it, I actually have a little sketch prepared so we can talk about that better.
Okay, do you
Want to do that?
Share?
Let me, yeah, let me share my screen. Do you want to unshare this? I think it's this one here. Okay, do you see my screen? Yes. Okay, that's that's it. The little comparisons here, I'll just zoom this out along. Because I just want you to know that's see if I'm on the right track with what I'm thinking of here. Is that, okay, I just kind of combined the flat or shed or a parapet kind of thing. Yeah, we all agree that I I put two different sightlines on here. It's my little man here. And one's across the street, one's eight feet out from looking up. All these boxes that I'll show you are exactly the same height. And so we'd all agree on what this is. We're saying whatever that height is fine. And it's, that's the top of equipment or whatever it is, that's fine. And you kind of get next door here, we call it, I'll call it a false mansard. And that's what we've seen here. And the reason it's false is because if I continue this line straight up, I'm still in the same place. This thing is just going to ply. It's a Mr. Potato Head mansard roof, even though it's called that. I think that nothing changed. You look at the sightlines, they're exactly the same. The the effect from the street is exactly the same. Worst case scenario. Sorry. Worst case scenario, you end up with something like this. Which we does nothing. You know, this is, it's probably put up here or somebody said this'll hide the height of the building. It does the opposite. But when you do a true mansard, you've actually cut into the building. So I kind of kind of shown block in here, but it's called a mansard and it's just cut into the building. There's a setback from this point here to that point there. And now the sightlines change, gone to the green. This is kind of what it looks like over here on the right. I don't know where this one is. And here's a house we've got. And it does exactly that, that it's a cutback so that now the sightlines are better. We like this. We want to give them, we should give them some credit for doing that because it doesn't affect anything as much. I'm actually showing the possibility we can talk about is if we should allow having a mansard parapet hiding some equipment and allow that to be up a bit. We don't need to discuss that now, but you you don't know what's going on up there. And the overall effect is much less. But what does become important with a mansard that nobody's talked about is dormers. How much dormer you put in? You can put a whole lot of dormer in. And this starts to look like a three story building, just a three story building. And this one doesn't. The one we've got on Water Street now is more dormer than not. So someplace we need to put that in there too. Interestingly enough, when you get to the the gable, my drawing's coming apart here, so we played with it. And take a look at the sightlines again, the same kind of thing happens here. Where you get across the street, at some point, you're going to see the tip of the roof. So, yeah, it's better. This shows now half the half the roof is above, half the roof is down below. And the perceived roof line is at this point here. But when you're across the street, you actually see the top over there. So you have the two effects happening. It's still better than it was if the roof line was out to a corner. So we like this. I want people to do this. And we should make it beneficial. As it turns out, the area that you're putting above here is exactly equal to the area that's in the parts you cut off, interestingly enough. The difference is what happens when you put dormers on to it. And that's when you get more.
How from a practical standpoint, what what are we talking about a difference in feet?
The difference in in what?
In in the heights, permitted heights. Five feet?
Well, depends on the size of the building, right? We have it right now. As this point here goes down, this point goes up. So it could be ten feet, it could be fifteen feet, it could be something really considerable. The only thing was kind of stopped because typically you'd say, well, as you get down near the bottom, it becomes an air, an A-frame. But as soon as you, and then we've kind of dictated that one. But if we have it come down this far, starting ten feet here and go up to thirty five feet, you go another twenty five feet up.
Well, just from a practical standpoint, we we don't think people are going to build buildings that way.
No, we don't.
It's only a visual thing, right?
Kind of happens though. But they might do though, and what they kind of do is we get here to this kind of thing here with a gambrel roof. Oddly enough, the sightlines from my two places are identical. Now, this is a gambrel or a true mansard, a really true mansard, where actually does have a peak. The sightlines end up being the same. It's different out here in the middle. That idea of how much area do you have? You have way more area up here than you took away here. That's why you do the gamble or they do do a gamble.
But if you're looking at that, Al, if you're looking at that diagram, you're just showing um, the gambrel would be measured right at that flat point or the deck point where we're trying to measure the mansard roof. Will they be measured at the same point? Or the way we're proposing it to be measured at the same point?
At the half point. Was it the half point?
Right. But if you're, if you're, if you, if you cut that peak off, then you've got basically a mansard roof like we show in in the diagram.
That's exactly true.
So you're you're measuring it to the to the half point of a gambrel roof, but of the flat point or the deck point of a mansard roof.
That's true. So if you do this and just have the, what we call the mansard here with a flat roof. No, I do a gambrel, and I can do this, and I can keep on going. Because half of it's above.
But what's the objective?
What, but you're, we're saying we're measuring it to the deck point, which is that line, that horizontal line.
I'm saying, I'm saying the difference between a mansard, the true mansard and a gambrel from the street is nothing. The difference is on this one, we said you can only go this far. On this one, I can keep on going.
But what what are we trying to do is just to minimize the feeling of bulk.
We're just trying to get a definition on how to measure height. And I think the more confusing it is, the more interpretation there is going to be. And that's what we're sort of trying to get away from.
Exactly. I want to be consistent though, too. If we have a reason for doing one thing, it should be a good reason to do it the other thing. I mean, I was just, just want to, that's why I was looking at these sightlines. The reason we're doing it is because of sightlines.
Yeah, it's just visual effect is to keep change and keep the buildings varied and to Yeah, it's just visual effect, is to keep change and keep the buildings varied, and to keep bulk from.
Right, I say we wanted to eliminate that, Al, right? So sightlines are very, this is, to me, is very interesting, but the only way to eliminate the issues based on the design. Is to take your eight foot, where your eight-foot guy, and it's to the very top of the building, so. It doesn't, we take out, the sightlines become important, but for instance, and I'm just picking Three Water Street. It goes, the the top has to be where those units are, at the very top. That's the only way to take out all the issues on sightlines and design, is to the very top of of the building.
I I I think there's actually the two issues.
Yeah.
I kind of agree with, there's the top, that's the absolute top, no matter what, that's the top. That's when you look across it, from across the street, from a similar height building. None of these is addressing that. I'm not talking about, that's not what I'm saying from the street, so I I agree, there's, there's kind of an overlay. There's one is sightlines from the street, one is overall height. And I don't think we can ignore them, you gotta kind of put it together. I don't think the math is that complicated, you know, you do whichever one allows you the most height, which is what a developer or architect's going to do anyway. It's going to pick out what's the most advantageous. If you can get more room doing this, plus. A whole lot of dormers, then he's going to do that, that's kind of what happened with Water Street.
But here's my point, if you make a right angle, and the top is the top, and I'm just picking forty feet. Then he's, he can design from there, he can do whatever he wants, with sightlines and everything else, he just cannot go up higher than forty feet.
I don't know if I have a problem with, with just saying, it's thirty-five feet, but you can go up as high as forty, I always wonder if it should be able to go a little higher than that, too.
Sure.
So I I I completely agree, that's why I kind of look at this, here's a coupla.
Yeah.
It falls, it falls within. What we're talking about with the slope, so that would make sense, and you wouldn't notice it, and you wouldn't notice it.
Well, it depends where you are, um, you know, sightlines can be. Further, further back, I don't know, you know, you're just coming from the street right in front of the building.
Yeah, well, the this guy's, either street right in front of the building, or down the street fifty feet, or something like that, I had to pick two places.
Level.
I I think you, I think we're getting too complicated, I think that's what happened with, that's what we're trying to avoid. Um, and somebody interpreting it um is going to have a problem of. Exactly where to measure for a gambrel roof.
I I think what we have. Now is okay, and whether there have the, the name of the design is. Shouldn't be of a concern, we defined that.
But I think, I, I think the name of it, kind of is a big concern, because we talk about gambrel or a Mansard. Or a false Mansard, and they are. Gambrel technically are the exact same thing, one turns at the right angle at the end of the building, that's it.
But if, but is it gonna be bothersome to have that as a regulation, the way it is?
No, I think it could, I think if if we kind of agree what you're trying to get to, if we all want to say, hey, no matter what the sightlines are. Five foot above the top is, is it, or ten foot above, you know, pick a number. No matter what you do, it can't be any more than, pick the number above, and then you end up with kind of another dotted line. Above these rectangles and say, no matter what you do, this is, this is where your building is going to be. But typically, it's thirty-five foot, and you can do this if you do this. Want to cut out the front, you can peek it up in the middle, that's exactly what this is, that's exactly, you know, cut out the side.
And that's what we have, that's what's there proposed, I mean, that's what's already there, and that.
We could probably combine this back down into four gir- four drawings again, just be, but I want to make sure that what we're calling that, that this. Is nothing to us.
No.
They say it's a Mansard, but it's not.
No.
So, call it flat match, or flat shed, parapet, false Mansard, all the same thing, it didn't help us. This guy goes to thirty-five feet to that point, and that's it.
Yeah, but the sketches more or less do that.
I think, I think we. I'm still saying we measure it based on how we're doing it now, if you want to put something other kind of standard in some. Section of the regs, like the, you know, mystic area or something where. There's a Mansard roof, and you give them a little extra height, but I think for measuring, I think it should be clear to the deck line.
Yeah, I I think we have right now is adequate.
Um, yeah, I agree, I think it's really good. I I think, I think these drawings are so interesting, but I just don't see it from a regulatory point of view, it's working very well. Being very, it was, it's confusing for me trying to understand this, for sure.
We want variety and not just cookie cup.
Yep.
Buildings, so.
I think we just want to make sure that that it's advantageous to people.
How does the uh, the number of?
Lost you, Michael.
Go ahead, Mike. Did you get muted, Mike?
Yeah, I, I, my inter. Internet is terrible, don't get Thames Valley, or whatever it's called. How does the number of dormers affect? All of this? Or the mass of dormers?
Well, that's what I kind of say, the way we, the way you uh, are, we're measuring. Any one of these rooms, either a gable or a gambrel. Uh, the dormer is sort of right now is, is exempt, I don't know where it kicks in. So if you can do sixty percent dormer, then this two-story building here, if I just say this, this guy here, right here. Is that a two-story building, or is that a one-story building?
It's.
And if I had these.
Stories you have, it's.
Well, you say the story, well, fine, but but in terms of where the roof line is, if this part here, on this. It's nice that it's a nice little building here. This guy here, according to what a gambrel is. Could be two feet shy vertical, be almost vertical, two feet shy. And then I can connect this window here with this window there, just have it all filled in, and have these all filled in, now they're dormers.
Uh, if you go down to Allen Street, there's a house that they're rebuilding, that's going to look just like that, it just has. The edge is gonna.
That's right.
Roof, but uh, it really is.
That's where I start to have a problem.
Uh, and that's real, really easy, and and maybe the only thing we need to do is.
That's what happened with Three Water Street, is that the number of dormers?
Exactly right, Three Water Street pushes it to the limit, you still feel it, you know, it's kind of a roof, but it's got so much dormer in it. That, so long as the top of the dormer is no fuck, higher than thirty-five feet, I don't think. But they have every opportunity to make it higher than that, given our now, our definition. So maybe the, the thing is fine, if you do a. If you do a uh. Put in dormers, it's a shed dormer, you have thirty-five feet. If you want to put a ridge on top of it, maybe we give him a couple more feet, because it really doesn't impact anything.
But that, that's arbitrary, you're, you're, you're starting to become arbitrary on where. You're saying, okay, we'll give him a few more feet, or we'll do this, that's.
Well, the only thing that wouldn't be, you said if you have a shed dormer, it doesn't, it is not part of a, of a roof line.
Do a shed draw, if I do, if I made this whole thing into a shed dormer, I can make the whole thing on there. And this is still a gambrel roof, but now it's a shed dormer.
That would happen as well.
Right, now, now we discounted it, but they said. Who's to say, they said, no, this is a gambrel roof. Here's your reg, it's a gambrel roof, it's okay. My roof lines up here.
That's the way the regulation reads today.
Right. So I think we're simple enough just to say the top of, of dormers can't be any higher than the baseline elevation.
The amount of dormers.
Well, any of them.
If they all represent us, but are we nitpicking the thing where?
Yes.
Well, this is just to stop Three Water Street from happening again. It will happen again, because.
Yeah, that's what I would like to see, is that, how, that's, it's the mass of that building.
Yeah, we got rid of it.
The, but what you're saying now is, if, if you're, if you're going with what you're saying now, then Three Water Street could be higher. As you're, you're.
Well, actually, I don't think, I I think the way I was going to go here is that Three Water Street couldn't quite happen. That roof line would have had been pitched in quite a bit more. And you wouldn't have, I'm I'm suggesting that you wouldn't have, you'd have half as many dormers. Or the total dormer would be fifty percent of it. Which case, the impact of that top floor would be much, much less.
But you, you'd have to write all of that into the zoning regulation, exactly, because otherwise a developer would argue with it and. And go to the zoning official and get an interpretation.
Oh, we stop, stop that with the, with the uh.
Flat.
No, on the site, on the setback deal, you know, you had to. Use the uh, the setbacks, and you couldn't have a common property line. And you set back from there, that's what messed up Three Water Street. And I gave you that extra footage.
There was a number of interpretations based on.
The floodplain, bunch of things.
Let's keep it simple.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, I think so, when you put too many.
Another uh, interesting thing was that they uh, in that Wikipedia article, they were talking about how the. Uh, buildings were taxed on their height, and therefore Mansard roofs were used to bypass zoning.
Right.
So can we leave things the way they are, move on to the next controversial issue?
Sounds good.
What else do we need? Oh.
How can you stop sharing so I can share again?
Yeah.
Thanks. Okay, so. I'll clean this up a little, this diagram, so it looks like more of a Mansard group, I think. Or it, it's going to be perf- more professionally done anyways, so. Um. In seven, on page seven, this was basically what we talked about last time with the um. Allowing thirty-five feet in the MDD district, or up to forty-five feet. With a special permit and meeting some additional requirements. Can you read through that and make sure it's what we wanted? Um, one of the things was with the parking, you didn't want validation, we knew that. What about the, I had put, I thought I had heard that um. Off-site locations for parking were allowed if under the same ownership. If the lot was under the same ownership, was that what you finally decided on that?
That was my understanding.
Well, I don't think so, because when I read that.
I would like to think that it would have to be.
Oh, excuse me, um, when I was reading that, it, that struck me that their off-site location could be in Kansas, you know? I mean, somebody can own something anywhere.
Oh, well, um.
I didn't think it was logical.
That section eight point two dash sixty, I think, um, says it's got to be within five hundred feet.
And this still is under that?
I I'll check on that, that's a good point. So if it's within five hundred feet.
Only issue. That I would have is, the uh, ownership could change, they could sell it, you know, I I would think that it would have to be. Deed it in some way, to the, I don't know how you would even do that legally. You know, someone could have something and sell it tomorrow.
Yes, I didn't think we wanted them to be able to have off-site parking to get um. Some benefits from the building construction.
There's probably almost no places that would meet this requirement, probably, only one or two places, so why not just keep it, has to be all on site.
All on site?
That's why I thought we had it, actually.
Thought that's what it said, but.
Yeah, it said that somewhere else, I think.
But do, do we really want it all on site? We really want all these little parking lots?
Well, this is only for getting the extra height.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is.
It just be the only way.
Edit on site, you can get four, you can get five more feet of height.
Yeah.
Ten more.
This is doing.
I bet if we just don't let them do that.
You mean?
I don't think, we, we don't want them to come up with some way to park three cars and get some extra height.
Well, then take the whole thing out.
I agree, I'd say just take that out, we don't want to encourage.
I agree, Hal, I agree.
I say take it out, take it out.
Take it out.
Take what out?
A whole thing about the.
Any advantages?
Off-site parking.
Parking.
Off-site parking.
Yeah.
No, they were saying parking.
On site.
They're going to take out the extra.
On site.
Yeah, the idea of providing on-site parking doesn't, shouldn't buy you anything.
That's right.
Why not? Why not?
Because we don't want to encourage on-site parking onto small lots, it just ruins the town.
Well, then why would they get the extra height?
We don't want to give, don't, don't give it to them.
Well, there's some, there's some large, so you don't want any kind of special permit above thirty-five feet?
Maybe, but not for parking.
It's not.
What are you gonna give, what do you want?
What?
Yeah, I think we'd need to vote on this, because. Why not give them something? So you're thinking only the public space would be the um mechanism to get additional height?
I think that's an excellent way to go, as opposed to, because we don't want to, to find some way to wedge in two or three spaces.
But they wouldn't be able. So, so one of the larger lots, you wouldn't want that you could, you would give them. The extra forty-five feet, and they could park, they don't have to park on site at all? So all the, the whole site would be building, you could, you would put the building on the entire site and say, we don't have to park. Any of our cars on site?
Park on the street.
There is no parking.
Where, where would we have a place, unless they tore down an existing building?
No, down um, south of what's um.
You mean where?
On Water Street.
The Marina is? You mean that Marina? That's the only open space?
Oh, south of the Randall's Wharf.
Yeah, that's the Marina, and then there's uh, that old, the old structures. That are down by DPI on the river.
Right.
But you don't, do we really want a tall building along the river, I don't know. I'd say no.
Well, uh, this is allowing it, and if you're saying they don't have to park on site, then they could actually.
Well, they're all subject to a camp, what, they're supposed to have a water dependent use.
Right.
You mean like that guy, don't, somebody wants to develop that mar- the Marina that exists there, where he was talking about, or. Would we want to have a forty, uh, Three Water Street complex down there? Or keep it, well, keep it down to thirty-five feet?
But then you don't want, then, but if you allow this, and they meet the requirements. And there's this, you know, with the special permit, I would leave in the parking. I would leave in the parking.
You have to have the parking plus. Well, that's got, that's a pretty big area.
Right.
So they could have parking in there. No, we're, there's um, right next to. Those, those big brick buildings that they turned into condos.
Yeah, I mean, south of those.
South, south of there, there's sort of a Marina in there.
Right, yes.
And, but there's, I think, there's, somebody was talking about developing some of the property in that area, I don't know if they meant the Marina or not. But it's, I think it bought that. And wanted to build a building there. It's a pretty big wide-open parking area.
Yeah, it's smaller than you're thinking, I think it's. Especially because there's an inlet, there's an inlet to where the water comes into that right now, so it's actually not that much space. It's a real challenge to get cars parked into there.
But why would you allow a building and then not have parking, a new building?
I would allow parking, I'm just saying I don't want to give them credit for having all one-site parking. Don't want to encourage it, I want to provide parking, if they want to be able to have business, I would think they want to be able to have parking.
But it's so low in there, they might, they might not be able to have, it is have an area too.
That's possible.
You know, it may be like Steamboat Wharf, where they had to have the first floor as garages.
Well, that was the idea with Three Water Street. Built the parking on the floodplain.
Right.
But I don't think, we don't really have a problem with that. But I don't think, we don't really have a problem with that.
But if they do that, then do they get an extra five feet of height, building height?
And that's the question, do we wanna do that? Maybe the trick is, if you do it for the parking. All within the building? Footprint? That's what they do with Three Water Street, which was, that was commendable.
No, it was.
So.
That, because that's, they had to raise the building up for the flood zone.
That's right. Not the parking.
But you can use it as parking rather.
Right.
Which is a, a plus if you wanna sell condos or sell apart or rent apartments, that's. A way you can do it and get people to use the building for that. Otherwise, people might not be willing to pay a large amount of money for. A place where there's no parking.
Well, last time we were, we were talking about how little parking there is in downtown Mystic, so I, I'm thinking if you're giving. A developer some compensation by allowing them to go up above thirty-five feet. You should definitely want them to provide as much parking on the site as they can.
Uh-huh.
I. Because if it's a, if it's a new site, why shouldn't they provide parking?
I'm thinking, I'm agreeing with Diane.
Yeah. It's a nice turnaround, right?
Yeah, well, we kind of, the waffling about it is that the idea of having these scattered ten-car parking lots. All over town.
But they're for the, they're for the uses on the site.
That's what we require for every business.
Right.
Parking onsite. And if you can't do it, you gotta do a validation. For the hundredth time. Worse than that.
Now, we, we just don't like the idea of the, the off-site parking. Don't, don't think that's tenable?
Oh, take that away.
Yeah, I would say that, which should go away.
Eric.
Cause I, let's kinda look at, yeah, I really think that should go away.
Okay, so let's, let's leave it that the parking that would be, and then if they can meet all the parking onsite, they may be. Able to get additional height, and we'll see what the public says.
Hmm.
Right.
Yeah, devil's in the detail for that one. Is that, what does that actually look like when you try to do it?
So now you're saying leaving parking onsite will give a height increase?
Yes.
Right, okay. That's what I thought. Okay, so.
Five feet.
Diane, right now it's ten feet, isn't it?
Ten feet.
Yeah.
Maximum forty-five feet. From thirty-five to forty-five.
Yeah.
But subject to a special permit, so you know, if you don't like, the proposal is, you can give them forty, for example.
And they gotta have public space.
Right.
Right.
That's gonna be, take away quite a bit.
But at forty-five feet, there still is less than Three Water Street.
Yes.
Um, not by much, though.
Not by much.
Alright.
I don't think it's the height of Water Street, it's the bulk.
I think it's kind of both, but.
Well.
It's at zero line.
It's a zero lot, yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay, uh.
I thought that last.
Why, why do we say a maximum of thirty?
Thirty-five's the, for the district.
Um, I thought the last sentence was pretty vague about public access, the last part of it in particular.
Public space or public access?
Public access.
Public access.
Well, um, okay, public access that is required under the Coastal Area Management Act. For non-water dependent use, maybe use a portion of this public space on the site, but not the entire requirement for public. Space. For the public space to allow the additional height. I think we talked about this a little, um, you know, if you're not a non-water dependent use, you're gonna have to provide coastal public access. Um. But you probably should provide some additional um, public space if you're going to get the height also.
But it's just not defined at all, and I'm just, I'm not sure what anybody's gonna end up with with this.
Well.
I'm not sure what it's saying, quite honestly.
But it's, it has a special permit.
Right, so you can, you can. You can say, okay, you provided this new deck along the water, and that's fine for your non-water dependent use requirement under the CAM Act. Hmm. But where's your other public space that connects maybe to the, you know, the public street or whatever, or, or a little. Little something out by the street.
Right, but how significant would that latter part have to be, I guess?
Well, that's, that would be something you guys would decide. I, I, I thought about making up all these percentages and. Where footage requirements and stuff, and I think it just got too complicated.
Yeah, I don't think you could do it.
Alright, that's fine.
They're gonna have to justify to you that it's, you know, it's, the public space is adequate.
Right, okay.
Alright, um, the next one was just the clarification. We talked about that. The hundred percent parking requirements was only for the residential units. Not for commercial units like in a mixed-use area, um, project. These were just all clarifications, um. X, uh.
Can you, can you look, as an editorial thing?
Oh.
Item fourteen in that sketch required frontage and access.
Oh, this one?
Yeah, the, see, yes, see how, oops, go back.
This one?
That one. See how you define minimum with measurement on the right?
Yeah.
Use that same technique on the left.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Not what you're doing, but I, I can see somebody misinterpreting it.
Okay.
Hmm.
I got it.
Rather than, it's just that, if the draftsman who does this probably would pick that up, but just to make sure.
This one, I just made a little, a few little clarifications on it.
I think that helps.
Yeah, I took away those dotted lines here so that you can see that this is actually going to. Lot two, and this is going to lot four, and that's going up to lot three. And then this explanation, I think, helped.
Adding the text makes.
Yeah, yeah.
Won't get confused with it.
Um, you took out WW from the screening requirements.
Mm-hmm.
I added all, I added this because you talked about testing outside.
Yeah, but we should still allow testing. Outside, but.
Well, it's only in the C, this is only for the CN, the MTC, and the MVC. It's not for like industrial. Areas or anything like that.
If the testing is paint samples on a piece of steel left out in somebody's backyard. I don't think that's a problem.
Okay.
But it, I just wonder whether it should require a special permit to ensure we have adequate screening. For visual concerns and noise, or something like that. Cause a, a laboratory could be so general. As long as it's inside the building, it's not a problem, but.
Well, okay, so outside uses?
Yeah, require. I don't know exactly how to word it.
Uh, it's, let's do, let's.
Screening.
Screening, and then there's noise standards in the general performance standards, so.
Are there? Okay, so this screening would be.
Right, okay. Okay, that's good.
I don't know if we'd ever run into it, but I just don't like.
Yeah.
Somebody going to do something that's gonna really upset. Everybody else.
Okay, so this one we talked about forever. And then I went back and you had already taken WW out of these conditions. You said it was a permitted use. And so it didn't have to meet any of these conditions in the WW.
Right.
So. I think we're okay with that. It still has to meet hazardous materials requirements.
Oh, yeah.
Because everything has to meet hazardous material requirements. So if you're okay with that.
Mm-hmm.
And then Bruce, Bruce, you're still here?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Oh, okay. You wanna just explain what you did with the EV?
Yeah, sure. It was just, it was just a minor change. Um, what we did was, the consensus was to eliminate the parking. Reduction incentive, the number nine, everyone, we uh, so I eliminated that. And the only other change I made was to the signage requirement. Um, I think we agreed that if um. We specified that the sign is for electric vehicles that are actively charging only, that that kind of met everyone's um. Concerns and, and goals of how we wanna um. You know, advertise these parking spots when they, when they do, if, if they are installed.
Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I just have an, an off-the-wall question. What about electric bikes? Do they charge this way?
I don't know.
I, I think it's a different, so. Yeah, actually, I think there was someone who was thinking about coming into town, have um, electric charging stations for bikes. They're, they're different. They look um. You can actually put the bike inside, and it's not like, not a plug system. Um. I, I don't, I don't think they are, I don't, I don't think they can be um.
Yeah, I, I just, I didn't, I had no idea.
The batteries can't be that big, so.
Yeah, I think this would be a little too much voltage for a bike. Yeah.
Infinitely too much.
Yeah, I think the cable for the electric vehicle, car would be more than a bike would weigh.
Okay, so, and then this was the retaining wall stuff. Um, I sort of broke it into retaining walls general. Throughout the entire site, um. And then retaining walls adjacent to property lines, which we talked about with that diagram. The only other thing I hadn't, I talked to, um, tried to get some. Determination on what type of height would require a certification from a structural engineer, and I think. We're just going to change this to basically say, um, the planning and zoning commissioner OPDS may require. That the retaining wall be designed by and require final certification from the structural engineer. So it depends on how hot, you know, if, if we think it's. Needs it, then we can ask for them to actually, you know, design it and certify it. We've done that before with different projects. We've even done that with like ledges, um. Where they're cutting a ledge and we've asked them to finally certify the ledge and things like that. I think that's a better way to do it.
Mm-hmm.
Because it depends how close it is to different things. And how high it is.
Right.
Not to be fussy here, but would it be a structural engineer or a civil engineer?
Um.
Structural, no.
Structural.
I think structural, yeah.
Builds bridges. Civil engineers.
Just say an engineer.
It's civil engineering, but it's a structural engineer.
Change it to a licensed engineer.
A licensed engineer.
That's actually good.
Huh?
As long as they don't bring a civil engineer.
Yeah. Why? You.
Understand.
Engineer should be civil.
Yeah, the, the.
Unruly ones.
There's, there's that misconception about what civil engineer means, cuz there's two kinds of civil engineers. There's the dig-in-the-dirt civil engineer. That's what we think of as the civil engineer. There's also civil engineer compared to a. A military engineer, to army engineering.
Yeah.
That's weapon engineering. Those are the two different kinds of engineering. Structural engineering is a civil engineer. But it's a specialty. We're talking about structural engineering.
You say though, for, uh, a license.
Professional engineers.
Professional engineer, he has to pass, have a light.
So should we say structural or?
Well, no, licensed engineer.
Licensed engineer.
Okay.
They won't bring in electrical engineer. It'll be okay.
That's. Guys are drawings. Yeah, but if he isn't, if he's licensed, he better know what he's doing. He can't. Shouldn't sign off something that he isn't.
Oh, sure, yeah.
He's liable.
And then with this, we took out the um. That one-third on here, we moved the. The retaining wall back to ten feet from property line. That's where you can start your four-foot-high retaining wall, and then you can go up.
Well, why?
Through your setback line.
Why do we have ten, ten feet? Setback and four feet? What if somebody wanted to do five feet and? Two feet, wow. You know, what's wrong with that?
What? Where?
Well, down and five retaining walls adjacent to property lines between.
Okay, so if we have this three-to-one slope up here, and that's.
No, no, the next one below it.
Right.
Requires at least a min- minimum of ten feet. Between. The next wall.
Mm-hmm.
Four feet, but why couldn't you do five feet? Space between, and have a two-foot wall?
Because, well, five feet doesn't. Doesn't allow for, for a lot of landscaping or whatever.
What's the ten feet for? What if you wanted to put flowers in there? And that's all. No, I, I've seen people do that.
I know.
Like, the uh, wooden, like, old railroad tie-type stuff. And use that and maybe only have them up to a height of two or three, don't go to four feet, and why should they have to have ten feet apart? It's just a visual thing. There's no reason for it.
Well, there, there is if you need to put trees in there.
Exactly, exactly.
Then you'd have to have ten feet, but what if you don't wanna put a tree in there?
Well, there's certain requirements sometimes with development that you need to put trees in there.
Then you have to have ten, then you gotta have a tree that, I mean, the space has to fit a tree there. I, I mean, we're putting in a. A, a, a limit. Minimum limit, and is it really necessary? Or should you just?
We tie it to that ten and four, uh.
Well, I don't have a problem with the ratio. It, it's why do we have to have ten feet? What if we want, only wanted to put eight feet or? Or five feet?
So, we.
The ratio.
See this, we typically see this when, when the topography is really challenging. It, it, it's not a decorative thing that, when people wanna put in these types of walls. And, and it really does impede uh, the ability to do the required shade trees or required buffers if it's less than ten feet.
Hmm.
This doesn't apply to single, like a single-family home.
Okay, and I liked it. Five feet is just not enough dirt to put more than a shrub in there.
Oh, I agree with that.
So.
But it says retaining walls, these are general requirements?
I should say you don't want to put a great wall of china next to your house, next to.
Oh, I don't, this, I don't have a problem with that. But I, I just don't like putting in requirements that become burdensome.
Well, if you can put it closer together, okay, so the general requirement, you can put it closer together than ten feet. But then it's um, is counted as one wall for maximum building structure height.
Well, I don't have a, no, I, I, I don't have a problem with the, the ratio. It's just. Ten feet seems awful wide to me.
Well, then if it's.
After the five feet. Unless you wanna just say. That if, if we're, have to put uh. You know, trees in the area. Or something like that, then you must have at least ten feet between the walls.
Maybe we can do something like that.
If that's what the concern is. Hmm? Have a minimum.
Okay, we'll think about that and propose something, um, or come up with an option, maybe. How's that?
Yes, I think that's.
Are you saying have less of a minimum unless there's a tree?
Right.
Okay.
Or something like that, if there's trees required in there.
Yeah.
Need to put in a ten feet or it'll destroy the lower wall.
Right.
Yeah.
Have to be ten feet. That makes, you know. Then there's a reason for it.
Okay. That sounds good. And then for, we proposed this for public spaces in the mixed use, the MTC mixed-use town center and the Village Center. Deb had talked about last time how the proposal now for, um, fifteen percent and ten percent for public space was just too much. So we're going down to five percent of the, um, total lot area minus steep slopes and wetlands and watercourses. And then basically, we, we did a little narrative on what actually public space should be. So that people understand it.
Hold on a second.
Okay.
Could you put in their water feature?
Sure.
Cause, yeah.
But these, uh,
Be pretty good.
The, the five percent, one-third would support realistic development than Diane.
Um, I think so. This is, um, you know, for
Both.
Two acres or more lots. They're not for the real small lots, um.
No, you said there was some problem with people wanting to do some redevelopment.
Right, Deb has a few proposals, um.
Yeah, yeah, it, yeah, it, it's a problem when someone is just, is redeveloping an existing property.
I understand that, but I, I, I mean, it will support what looks like a reasonable development.
I think so, is when you consider that these parcels have to be bigger than two acres in size. So as Diane said, they're not the, some of the little tiny ones that are down there.
Oh, no, I know that. But that's what we, I think originally when we were talking the two-acre requirement, that was because we expected large.
Right.
Large development.
Right.
Maybe the, the two acres, that isn't a problem, is it?
I, I don't know. I don't think so. It's, it really is just the percentage, um, that's, that's becoming uh, clear. It's, it's just not working. In some cases, it, the requirement is over an acre worth of public space on a property, and it, it's just not workable.
Not, yeah. No, I just wondered whether the two acres should be a larger.
Well, you know, we thought about that, um, and, and ultimately we decided two acres is probably appropriate.
And that's it.
Oh, that's good job. Now you can go feed the cats.
I don't know, eh, eh, we have that variance, um, to review and we, um, but we can do it the next time if you don't want to.
We might as well, huh?
If you want to review it today.
Well, late is.
It's nine thirty.
Oh, I don't mind it, but, uh, other people want to postpone it. We have time on the CPA.
We have, uh, yes, we have the next meeting. You can review it if you want.
And the town of Stonington, we for.
The town of Stonington, I think.
Why don't we just, yeah, defer the, uh, car wash business for the next.
That's a little complicated. I think you might get into a big discussion on that one. This one is also not till May eighteenth, so you have till the next meeting too, if you wanted to.
This is all.
This is all on solar, small solar panels. I don't know if it has any impact on the town of Brown. For the town of Stonington, did anybody have any issues with it?
Does anybody have any concerns with it?
I do not here.
No.
All right, so I, we have no comment in there.
Okay.
And then, uh, okay, then we have the next item report, commission reports, uh, reported chair. I attended the affordable housing presentation, uh, a week and a day ago. Only ten people were there. I think they sent it out to everybody to look at. But I thought was interesting. Oh, I don't know. They're all, ten people, and all of them were from Mystic, which I thought was interesting.
They were, and, and we were all over sixty-five.
What I thought was interesting out of it was that the, uh, projection for population growth with the town till twenty thirty was none. Basically, that was going to stay constant. I was surprised that.
A little while ago, they were saying that population was going to go down, so this is actually a change.
Hmm, no, I was just surprised at that, because it, they shown that it was very constant. And we had a, uh, regional planning commission meeting yes, yesterday, which four people showed up. Chairman wasn't there, so. But the only thing that was, people were talking about was that almost everybody is working on their portable housing plan. I guess they must be due all at the same times. Otherwise, there wasn't a lot of activity, uh, from any of the four people. No quorum, no meeting. That's all I had. Reporter commission, does anyone on the commission have anything to report on? Reporter staff? Staff have anything to report on? We had our Connecticut Federal Federation of Planning Agencies newsletter. And ASP report.
And I just want to note, I am working on putting together all of the questions that you've been getting for the Mystic Education Center. Um, it, it's been going on for about a year, so I'm, I'm trying to pull them all together into one document. Um, so, so we are, we are hearing, um, what the public's saying. And, and really, if anybody wants to just contact me with procedural questions, you know, I'm happy to take a phone call or, or email.
But should we be setting up a, a public meeting? I don't like doing that.
Uh, yeah, I, I, I think it's more appropriate if you, if you, I know they don't want to hear it from staff, but direct them to staff in terms of, especially in terms of procedure.
Did, Deb, did you read, I, I can't remember who was copied on it, the, uh, letter from Jeffrey Richards this week.
I'm gonna send her a copy.
Yeah, staff did not get that.
Yeah, I told her I'd send her a copy.
Yeah. Hey, Deb.
Interesting comments on that letter.
Deb, I don't know if there's a vehicle that we can do it, but, you know, with the chairman's permission, I think there should be some time that we answer some of these questions that keep coming up every single meeting. You know, one method you could use is once we're done with public communication, you can direct, you can say, and staff will answer those, or we'll, we'll take it up under, you know, communication from the commission or, or staff can address it under report of staff. We can at least hit the, the very easy ones. Yeah, because we're hitting them, you know, we're hitting every week. Right.
Same thing, there's, I don't know, I think they're very frustrated as a group.
And, and a lot of their questions are not, they're not appropriate for this commission to answer.
No.
Easy ones, yeah, we can do, yeah.
Ones that aren't appropriate, yeah, or
Yeah.
They have to be covered because it's an action.
Yeah, I mean, you can just ask staff to address it under report of staff if you like.
Yeah. Well, maybe if you want to put all these things, questions together and we can do, do that or just identify this.
Right.
You, you, that's what I. Just do a bunch of them rather than try to kill them all. At this point, we're gonna have a bunch of more meetings where all these people are going to talk again. And we can start doling out answers with report of staff, or staff is going to be giving you a bunch of answers. And you can come up with, you know, five points. And then next meeting come up with five more points, but at least we'll have those covered.
Yeah, and then we can always say that was re, you know, covered in the last meeting, read the meeting minutes.
Right, right.
Oh, can we have like sort of a, I don't know, Google Docs or something where all of the information is available easily to the public?
Yeah, that, that's something that Michael Kane had suggested a couple of meetings ago. And so I, I have been working on gathering together all of the frequently asked questions and trying to synthesize them. Um, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I tried to do before.
Right, and right.
I think it brought, eh, we got answers to some of the stuff, or at least direction, some direction.
Right.
So.
Maybe we can, maybe we could pub- publish them somewhere.
That's, that's the idea. Once it's done, we'll.
And leave them on the, on a website somewhere. So once they're done, they're done.
Yep.
Maybe we could do that. And when will we expect to see something back from Jeff Daniels? Isn't, we have a date?
We, we don't, we don't at this point. It just.
Can we tell him he's got to give us a date or?
Well.
He works for us.
Yeah, I know. I mean, part of the problem is that as staff, we're, we're really getting in a lot of applications and we don't have time to deal with it. So that's part of the problem.
Yeah, but he should, eh, it, doesn't he do the work?
He do, he does, but we go over it very, very carefully before it's, before you see it.
Well, maybe we should go look at it and first and be, and not worry about it and just say this is what our opinions are. And then go, you have time after, go look at it.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, well, I'll see, but I know he's on vacation right now. I'll, I'll see if I can get a better answer for you.
Well, I mean, it might be good just to, you know, there, there are some things that we never really discussed. Either ironed out or people ought to be aware about what the concerns are. You know, to come up with an answer, conclusion. Whether. Because what we gotta do, it, it has to be something that's going to be universal with, with whoever develop, ends up with the actual development.
Right.
It's not just a specific. But it would be good if we had at least a forecast.
Yeah.
That might quiet the public down too. If they know that. Say it won't be till August or whenever it is.
Sure.
Tell them they can take a vacation for this. All right. ASP report, I saw no one has any questions. It's a lot of ASP action.
Oh, I was wondering, is, is that, that, uh, Fort Hill Road, is that the taco truck? Next to.
One fifty Fort Hill Road.
Um, which one is that? That's, that's at the Quonix Plains Park.
Oh, oh, okay.
Oh, that's where they're gonna have the big festival?
Yeah, yeah.
Well.
Speaking of which, I see all these illegal signs posted all over the place about the, the truck. Who is responsible for those signs and why are they there?
Which signs?
Oh, they're all over the place.
Oh, what ones?
Advertising.
The Truck Fest.
Oh, you mean who's organizing it?
Well, who's putting out all these illegal signs? And it's on town property and it's sponsored, I don't know, whatever the town is doing with it. You know, are we talking out of both sides or a mouth here?
We can, um, address it. Right, we can address it a couple of different ways. We'll talk to the applicants since it came through us as an ASP, and we'll also talk to the code enforcement official.
Thank you. Who, by the way, I don't see any action, but.
But you were going to copy me on your list, so.
Okay, yeah. Sorry.
All right, does anyone have anything else? Not, uh, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Go moved.
Second.
Second. Our next meeting is what, May eleventh?
Right, all right, all right. Thanks, everybody.
Night.